Good evening and welcome. This is the special school committee meeting for the Greenfield Public Schools, Thursday, December 17, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. This meeting is being held fully remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 30A, Section 20. We'll go right into a roll call, please. Member Johnson Musad?
Absolutely. Member Karen?
Here.
Member Hollins?
Here.
Vice Chair Ekstrom, sorry for going out of order. Member Johnson Musad, I am here. Chair Poiety?
Here.
Member Wall?
Here.
Mayor Rita Gardner?
Here.
We are all here.
Wonderful, thank you. I call the meeting to order at 6:01 p.m. We will go right into the public comment section of the meeting. And the way that we handle this is please put your name into the chat box of the meeting if you're on the WebEx, indicating you'd like to make a public comment. And we'll call on you in the order those are received. And if you're unable to do that because you're on the phone or any other reason, we will take a moment after the chat box public comments to hear comments from anyone who is unable to put their name there. I'm not seeing anyone indicating a public comment. Member Johnson Musad, do you see anyone?
I do not.
We'll do one last call for a public comment through the chat. Still not seeing anyone. How about anyone who's unable to put something in the chat and would like to just speak their public comment? Go ahead and speak up now. You'll need to unmute your mic. Still not hearing from anyone. We'll do one more call, unmute, and indicate you'd like to speak. All right, so we'll move on from public comment to our only agenda item of the evening, item three, which is discussion, a decision on in-person learning. And what I'd like to do is actually have a motion from a school committee member to take from the table our motion that was tabled at the end of our meeting, Tuesday, the 15th, to return to students and staff to in-person instruction.
So moved.
Second, Johnson Musad?
So that was Member Ekstrom with the motion to untable or to take from the table?
Return to the table.
A vote on that, please.
Chair, Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Rita Gardner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so we will begin discussion on this motion. Is there any member of the school committee who is anxiously waiting to begin discussion on this?
Chair Poiety?
Yes.
This is Member Karen. Would this be an appropriate place to bring forward the recommendation from the Joint Labor Committee?
Oh, yes, you met today, is that correct?
We did.
You guys just finished meeting? Please, go ahead and give us an overview, that would be helpful. Thank you, Member Karen.
We've actually prepared a statement that I do now.
Is it too late for public comment?
It is too late for public comment.
Oh, great, thanks.
Go ahead, Member Karen.
Okay. In light of rapidly rising cases and with the prediction of a continued rise after the holidays, the JLMC for Health and Safety recommend resumption of Phase II in-person learning no sooner than January 11th, with the understanding that a further extension might be needed. The Joint Labor Management Health and Safety Committee resolved to meet regularly after the holidays to continue considering the health metrics and advising the school committee regarding the possible resumption of in-person learning as a new epidemiological information is released. Please remember that other groups and bodies may have information that affects our recommendations.
Did I read that slow enough? Yes, thank you. And that is, you guys voted on that to bring it forward?
We didn't take a specific vote, but everybody helped draft the statement, so.
Great.
And so we're clear that was immediately prior to our meeting now, yes?
Correct, yep. We got eight metrics at 5:20. We did the metrics from the mayor's webpage as well. Just considering that we've seen such a large uptick post Thanksgiving, we are anticipating we may see another large uptick post Christmas and New Year's. It just seems like a safe decision.
Could I ask a question, please?
Go ahead. Mayor Rita Gardner, go ahead.
Sure. For those on the call who may not know who the joint committee is and why they would be making this recommendation, I wonder if you might explain and also explain who was in attendance at your meeting this afternoon to help you come to that decision. I mean, I don't know if you had some other entity from the city of Greenfield.
We did not have the Board of Health, although they have been invited to each of the meetings. We did have our lead nurse, Pam Owen, both Karen Patnod and Melody Goodwin, principals from our schools. We had Superintendent Harper, myself, and then we had both Michael Sustick and Gara O'Brien as unit representation. And if I'm missing anybody, somebody shout at me.
Janet Dickinson, our Director of People Services.
Then is also was in that call.
And who is the committee?
Here, the Joint Labor Management, it's a very long name, Safety and Health Committee. It was agreed upon between all parties to create this committee to consider metrics changed and advise the school committee, just to be another source of information. We make recommendations as a group, and yeah.
But, Member Karen, could I add something further to your response to the mayor's question?
Sure.
Just to clarify, members of this group also include the health director and the school physician. We regularly solicit their input and consider any actions, including votes of the Board of Health, or advice, or written recommendations from any members that cannot participate. Again, it's a non-voting body, it's an advisory body. And this group has met for the last three weeks each time new state data has been released. And there are metrics that triggered when we had to begin meeting, which was when cases exceeded eight per 100,000 in our community, we had to begin meeting, although there was no requirement to take any action relative to the schools, so it was just to monitor the data. And as of this evening, the new state data places Greenfield in the red with nearly 60 cases per 100,000 and a positivity rate over 6%. So that new data, as well as the Board of Health's recommendation that came out, that was sent in a letter to the community on Monday, was considered in tonight's meeting.
I would note, Chair, that Jennifer Hoffman has joined us if you need, if any of the school committee members need to talk with her or ask her to speak.
I do see Member Ekstrom, and I appreciate Director Hoffman being on the line with us, and we may have questions for her, so I appreciate the attendance. Member Ekstrom, go ahead.
I just want to add one thing to the description about the group. This is a group that we had agreed to during negotiations with the union and the GA, Unit A and Unit C, which for everyone is the educators within the district. I didn't hear that mentioned, I just wanted to make sure that we noted that as well.
Thank you.
That's all.
Thanks.
And I would certainly open it up. Director Hoffman, if you want to add anything or speak to anything, or if you're willing to answer questions from the school committee, that would be awesome. But if there's anything you want to add at this point, I would take that now. Go ahead.
Interestingly enough, about a half hour before this meeting began, Monica Burrell, who is the Director for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Public Health, sent out a mass telephone call to basically everybody in Massachusetts telling people not to gather for Christmas and New Year's. So, because the numbers are very high through more than half of the Commonwealth. So we are really emphasizing not having gathering sizes. The metrics are worrisome. When I met with the board last weekend, the board felt last week that the metrics were something to be considered, and they're even higher six days, five days later. Just for example, we have, we did the two-day testing, and we got the first day back and 2% of the 630 we have done were positive, they were asymptomatic. So that's about 20 people or 17 people. And that's, I mean, it doesn't sound like a lot, but those 17 people interact with other people. So the decisions that were made by my board, the decisions that were made in the city with the mayor to, you know, limit access is because we're trying to stop the spread in the Commonwealth. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, I appreciate the perspective. And I did see a hand from Member Hollins, I believe, and then also Member Johnson Musad after that. Go ahead.
I've been thinking about this a lot. I don't have a specific opinion on whether, what to do, that's not why I'm speaking. And in fact, I had seconded the motion only as I had said at our last, this could be discussion. But I have been thinking about it, and I've been thinking about all the different ways people look at this. And the guidance on the DESI website, which I've learned is guidance, that says that with escalating numbers, or when you identify someone in the school itself with COVID, the part of the reasoning is whether or not, if there's a risk of transmission for those children that are in school. And I've been thinking how reasonable it is to consider that in the discussion, because as was discussed at the meeting last week, which may not be clear to people joining the discussion for the first time, that they think in five or six different schools, there are five to 10 significantly handicapped children, it's very small numbers. And I do think it's worth it when people are discussing this, looking at it from different points of view, whether or not the five or six children in school are at increased risk of transmission when we have school. I'm not saying they are, they aren't, I'm just saying I think it's an interesting way to look at it in terms of closing schools. And the other thing that occurred to me is, I don't know how it would happen if some of the schools were open with staff and the virtual, all of our instructional personnel have 180-day contracts for teaching, instructing, and I was unclear how that would happen if some, some people are asked to teach on certain days and other people are asked not to teach on certain days. How do we work that out with 180-day contracts? That was the other thought I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Hollins. Director Hoffman, do you want to respond to that?
I know there are limited students in the classrooms. I know there's also teachers in the classrooms. I also know that, I don't know personally, but I am concerned about these students who have special needs being able to keep their face masks on. And once there is coughing, sneezing, body fluids, I get more concerned about that. I get concerned about, or thought processes, keeping things clean and in between if there are body fluids around. So I'm not saying, yes, there are limited students, but there's also adults and children that are there. We don't know where everyone's been. And there's also fluids that can be or possibly be transmitted, so you have to use caution. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And Member Johnson Musad, I know you had a comment, and then we'll go to Member Ekstrom.
Yes, I think that the motion that we've brought back on the table was put forward originally, I think primarily for discussion purposes. And I'm wondering if Member Ekstrom would consider withdrawing the motion and if we would make a new motion to follow the guidance of the Joint Labor Management Committee.
No. No, I'm not open to that, and, but I'll get to, I'll get to the reason why. So what it was is that to return children to in-person learning, which is a very generic statement, and where, where, so where the, where the motion came from was, do we return students to in-person learning prior to the holiday break? And listening tonight, it sounds like there's two questions on in-person learning. Do we return students prior to holiday break? And do, when is it that we would return students to in-person learning post-holiday break? Does that make sense to everyone? If not, please, someone tell me.
I think that makes sense. Are you, are you making a new motion? Are you modifying your motion? What are you doing?
Well, I don't, I don't know. I mean, it's, we need to make two decisions, it seems to me, which is what we had discussed doing, was decision on in-person learning. But now there are two decisions. One is before Christmas, the other's after Christmas. And I, truthfully, I have feelings on both. Having been in, is it acceptable if I speak further?
Of course.
Okay. So, having been in the negotiations with the unions and, you know, serving as the, as the representative for the school committee with Member Johnson Musad and Member Wall, what I know is that we have to give, we have to give teachers and educators, it's, I don't have it written down somewhere, but it's between three to four days. We started the, 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 we started at five and then we sort of met somewhere in the middle. And so when I think about that, if we leave this evening saying, yes, we have to return to in-person before school break, well, that would mean they'd return on Wednesday, and that's a whole lot of bregarol for a half day.
And there's not in-person on Wednesday, they're always remote on Wednesdays.
Even at the high school?
I don't know.
So, at any rate.
Superintendent Harper, can you clarify? Are they remote at the high school also?
On Wednesdays?
In-person.
They're in-person, okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And I just, I think that, and the, and the reason that was done was because it isn't easy for someone to move, as an educator, for, to move from being at their home to the classroom. You know, you sort of have to re, you have to redo everything. And so whatever the amount of time was that we agreed to was reasonable, and there wasn't a reason that we would say, no, you don't get to have any time. So, that being said, I'm not, I don't think it would be wise for us to return to school pre, or return to in-person learning pre-December break. I do want to say that I fully understand the difficulty that this has placed on special needs parents. They had kids that were struggling and have been unable to access their education since March, and now they've had all of a whole week and a half. And we're, from everything that I've sort of heard, we're seeing real strives in their children and real changes in their sort of behaviors at home because they were interacting with others. And so there was some real value. And the other piece of that being that we are doing special education evaluations right now, and those have to be done in person. And we can't do them in person outside because obviously it's cold. But so now do we do in-person, and they were doing, that was happening, and now that we've closed that word saying, no, we're not going back to in-person until January, how is it that those would continue to be done? Would we say it's okay for someone to come in for in-person if they're doing, having evaluations done? One person goes in, one person comes out? I don't know, that's a different question. As far as returning December 11th, Katie, that's what you said?
January.
January 11th.
Yes, January 11th.
January 11th, I'm, excuse me. I actually don't think that that's a bad idea. I think that 10 days after New Year's Eve, 11 days, that sounds pretty reasonable. Anyone who's going to get anything theoretically, it would show by then. That being said, we do have people who teach from the schools, and there is a part of me that says if we're going to not allow in-person teaching, or in-person learning because we're concerned about people being able to contract COVID from that, and knowing what's happened since Thanksgiving, it seems to me that we should actually close the buildings and just say, look, buildings are closed, principals stay home, administrators stay home, everybody stay home, because we want to be sure. We don't want to tax anyone, we don't, you know, all of those things. And Jordana, you'll have to, have to clarify a little bit what that would mean. I don't, it doesn't mean custodians still have to show up, I don't know, I don't know any of those things. But that sort of is what leads me to that decision. So those are my thoughts, everyone, it's, and I will sit back and listen from here on out, I expect.
Thank you. And I, I have to apologize, I have a singing song, so I keep muting, and it's incredibly distracting, and I've lost track also of who might have been planning to speak next. So if no one minds, we'll start that over. I actually would like to hear from the superintendent. I think Member Ekstrom has brought up several things that kind of are central to the whole conversation of what does it really look like to be shut down through the holidays to potentially January 11th? So Superintendent Harper, if you could talk a little bit about that piece and the questions that Member Ekstrom asked, that would be super helpful.
Yes, so first of all, I, I think we should all hear the singing, I thought that sounded great. So, yeah, I just want to, you know, not having been at the previous meeting, I might like to start just generally by talking a little bit about the thinking. I, like others, am tasked with keeping students safe primarily and looking after the welfare of staff, and reporting to the school committee. And the Board of Health's vote and recommendation was significant in that it is considering new data and a change in the data and a rapid escalation in what we've seen from the COVID metrics in Greenfield in a very short span of time. I want to start by saying that I fully support the value of in-person education for our students. I have been before this committee many times championing, championing the importance of this as a civil right for our special education students and as an equity measure. And our remote plus plan has many layers beyond this, which I was a chief author in writing because I fully believe in the importance of that. So everything that I'm going to say tonight is not at all to detract from the importance of that. The difficulty for parents who are trying to support students with sometimes profound disabilities and complex medical conditions and other situations, it is extremely challenging, and many of you have been without significant educational services for some period of time. And I absolutely want to acknowledge that our goal and efforts around the clock since March have been to bring these students back. And unfortunately, we cannot wave a wand, I'm sure people wish it had happened sooner or, you know, we can't, we can't even discuss all of it in public because of the laws around negotiations and some of the other pieces of that, and the preparation and the regulation. So we, I'm going to leave that aside, except to say, we fully agree that this is important and essential when it is safe to do so. And when I think about my responsibility personally, as the person hired to implement the committee's decision and look after the students and staff of our district and following policy, the welfare of our students at the end of the day is the most important thing. So if I am sitting here advocating for the students who are served by in-person learning, I also have to consider the risk to those students from in-person learning. On Friday evening, when we last met with the Joint Labor Safety Management Team, I posed a question to our school physician, Dr. Jennifer Schott, and I asked her, can you talk about the risk to students who may have complex medical conditions, leaving aside staff for a moment, just speaking about students who are in-person, and what their risks look like? And she said two things. One, students generally get COVID at a lower rate than adults. And two, for students who have other factors, including complex medical conditions, their risk of a very serious episode of COVID is much greater. And for those students who do, within that population, get COVID, the potential for it to be very serious is significantly higher. And that was last Friday, and we still continue to monitor data because it was prior to the closing of municipal buildings and the Board of Health recommendation. But that's just generally speaking, we want to understand that it is a complex decision. We recognize that there are many unpopular decisions, but ultimately, the Board of Health's recommendation was very clear, and it is consistent with other municipal buildings that are following precautions at this time. I think Member Ekstrom asked us a number of questions, I'm not sure I can answer all of them from memory right now. One of them was about evaluations, and we just talked about this in our meeting, you know, in the last half hour, half hour ago. The Board of Health recommendations, as I understand them, and I asked Director Hoffman to clarify, is about Phase II, meaning these are the students in-person in classrooms. And the letter referenced Phase II. Member Ekstrom, you'll recall that we specifically negotiated a separate phase that allowed us to do in-person evaluations. And we did that recognizing that at some point in the future, which looks like now, we might have to roll back, but we didn't want to eliminate the ability to do some in-person testing. So what I can say, and I can ask Director Hoffman to clarify, but my understanding is that the Board of Health vote pertains only to Phase II in-person services. Now, there was a blizzard today, and I don't know that anybody wants to sit outside and do an evaluation in a snowstorm, but that is a separate question than whether it's a health risk. And I, so it's going to be clear that there are pragmatic factors, but that doesn't mean it's precluded from a health perspective. And I would be happy to talk with the director, anybody else, to see how we could continue to implement evaluations. We just had this conversation with Director Dickinson briefly, because these are important, and we don't want to backlog, we do want to move those services forward. So we're prepared to tackle that question of can we do that safely? I believe there are ways to do that safely, we have a lot of Plexiglas, we have protocols in place, we've written all that. I think there's no reason to stop something that can be done safely if it can be done safely. The other thing I just want to address briefly about emergency closing, I just want to state that the superintendent is charged by policy with the authority to close schools temporarily. In acting on Monday in following the Board of Health recommendation, I believe that I was following the policy on emergency closings, which is EBCD. I also had, perhaps coincidentally, had to invoke that same policy earlier the same day, and again today, for the purpose of a snow day. So the temporary closure that I enacted on Monday was it really essentially until tonight's meeting so that the committee could weigh in, but also balancing the need to tell families that this could, if voted by the committee, could last some period of time to try to provide notice for the same reasons that we were talking about earlier tonight, that it is incredibly disruptive for families, is very hard on them, and the more notice they have, the better. I just want to acknowledge those things. Member Ekstrom, if you had a question that I didn't get to, maybe you could restate it so I could answer it.
I had a lot sort of questions for everyone, so I don't know if there's anything specific that I was looking for you to answer outside of really, what do we do about evaluations? So, anyway, feel free, I saw the mayor had her hand up.
I was scratching, but I'm happy to talk, but I, Amy may have a different idea.
Well, I'm wondering, I've seen Director Hoffman very actively engaged listening, if you have any comment at this point, I would happily take that.
I agree with Superintendent and Susan Ekstrom about that we can find a safer way to do these evaluations. We could discuss plans and move forward. We don't need to backlog this. And there are people, there are children that need to move forward with their education. And I think we could find a safe way to implement that.
Thank you. And Mayor Rita Gartner, did you want to comment now?
I do. From a, from a process standpoint, several minutes ago, I think, Member Johnson Mossad asked Member Ekstrom if she, I, I want to talk about process and then I want to give you my thoughts, but if, if she would be willing to alter her original motion. As she began to talk, it sounds like that she should or, or should consider it because she mentioned that it was not necessarily a bad idea to close the schools down until January 11th. So that may not be, that may be part of another motion. I don't know. So that's all. From a, from a process standpoint, we've, we may be a little bit off the original motion.
We are. I think that's a really good point. And, and it's just gone into the chat and because the motion was tabled from the last meeting, I am surprisingly prepared to read it to you where normally I would look to our recording secretary, Susan Farber. But the current motion on the table is move to return students and staff to in-person instruction. I think what would likely make sense at this point is to actually move to a vote on that motion and then look to put a different motion forward. Do you see what I mean? Because this motion does seem, I think you were saying, out of date perhaps, or, or yes. So if that if there's no further discussion under this one, we can, we can move to vote on it and then put forward a different motion now that we have some additional information.
I will pull it. Yeah, it's fine.
That's an option too.
So I'll withdraw the motion and someone make a new one.
Okay. So the motion has been withdrawn. Is there a member that would like to attempt a new motion? Member Johnson Mossad, please go ahead.
I move that we adopt the recommendations of the Joint Labor Management Safety Committee.
And that, and as stated, okay. And we would need to get also a copy of that, Member Ekstrom. I'm sorry, Member Karen, a copy of that statement.
I mean, just that the motion doesn't address prior to school.
So, yeah, I was going to say
Prior to Christmas. And, and that's fine if we're
Let's keep working on the motion for a second because I would like, I think I would like the motion to address two things. I think I would like to have it to have a date of potential return. And I also think it would, I would like for it to address the assessments that we've talked briefly about.
I'm confused. I thought, I thought the recommendation from them was did have a specific date in that, and to reevaluate on, on that date.
Did it say January 11?
Yeah, maybe we could ask Member Karen to please read it back again.
Yes, I will read it to you. It does not say we would reevaluate. It says that we are suggesting we go back and if needed, we will continue to evaluate over the time, but I will read the
Thank you.
It's going to take me a second. In light of rapidly rising cases and with the prediction of a continued rise after the holidays, the JLMST for Health and Safety recommend resumption of Phase Two in-person learning no sooner than January 11th, with the understanding that a further extension might be needed. The Joint Labor Management Health and Safety Committee resolved to meet regularly after the holidays to continue considering the health metrics and advising the school committee regarding the possible resumption of in-person learning as new epidemiological information is released. Please remember that other groups and bodies may have information that affects our recommendation.
Thank you. So the motion was to, Member Johnson Mossad, could you say it again?
Yep. The motion was to adopt the recommendation of the joint committee.
And based on what we've heard, does that motion have a second?
Well, what's the motion? Is it, it's just the first, I think the motion is just the first sentence, yes?
To adopt the recommendations of the joint committee.
And so what are the recommendations of the joint committee then?
We need a second before we can discuss.
Second.
Okay. And let's move to discussion. So that was Member Johnson Mossad with the, with the motion, Member Ekstrom with the second, and let's discuss. Go ahead, Member Ekstrom, and then we'll take others.
Well, I don't speak to it since I made the motion. Is that all right?
Sure, go ahead.
Just, it sounded like this group reviewed the facts, had a robust discussion. It, it sounds like there's agreement on the committee that the January 11th date makes sense. So that's why I wanted to support their recommendation.
Sure. Thank you. Other discussion.
Yeah, me, sorry. My only, I guess my point is we should get whatever the recommendation is should be included in the motion. That's my only point. As opposed to, we're gonna
I would I could amend the motion. So about, I move that we resume Phase Two in-person learning no sooner than January 11th, with, with the understanding that a further extension might be needed.
Second.
You can continue to just check it if you want for the next 10 to 15 minutes.
Okay, Mayor.
Yes, sorry. I'm not sure if we're a troublesome dog, but it's just a troublesome husband. I don't know.
Sounds like he's cooking something good.
Okay. So we were working on, I believe at this point it would be a friendly amendment to the original motion, which was to adopt the recommendations of the joint committee. And there's a request or a potential request to adopt the recommendations of the joint committee and resume in-person learning. And was there a date? What was the next piece of that?
The motion, let me just withdraw the prior motion and put, put forward a new motion.
Okay.
I, I move that we resume Phase Two in-person learning no sooner than January 11th, with the understanding that a further extension might be needed.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Member Karen.
That was Member Karen with the second and the mayor with the second. Okay, and let's move to discussion.
Uh, this is my Karen, I have a
Go ahead, please.
One of the reasons that I really thought, I mean, other than the clear indication that things are rapidly rising is that I thought January 11th was a good idea is that while we may be able to maintain safety measures for those six kids in each building or whatever the number is, if we are unsure that we can do that and we put them in and then a case goes down, these kids are going in and out and these kids are one of our most vulnerable populations and often, not for every child, but often that means a really strong consistency. And pulling them in and out is worse than taking a little bit of time to be sure we're all ready to go. That's sort of why I also thought about the and all, as well as all the other reasons, but it was another piece of this transitional time is really difficult for these.
An important point. Thank you. Member Karen, I'm wondering if our motion should include the stipulation that when we're talking about in-person learning, we're not talking about all students, but the students in, is it Phase Two?
Yes.
Is that right?
I think the motion includes Phase Two.
Oh, does it? Okay. Thank you. Okay. And Susan Farber just, yes, it does include Phase Two. Thank you. Okay. I've still got singing going on, just in case we were wondering. Member Hollins, did you have a comment?
Yes, I have two comments. The first is I, I support this motion the way Member Johnson Mossad has reworded it. I wouldn't have supported the first one because it's already so confused. Who has decision-making authority on this? I wouldn't want to add in another advisory group as another authority. So I'm glad you reworded that for the content. But the other thing is the word, the discussion about in-person learning. You've already mentioned that it may be perfectly safe and reasonable for individual students that are having evaluations for that to be scheduled. And there may, what may not be obvious to all of us is that there are some other things that happen on a one-to-one basis that the provider and the superintendent feel is safe, like someone that must have physical therapy once a week or something. There's certain health-related services we provide that aren't really classroom learning. So I'm wondering if there might want to be an exception tied into the motion that that allows individual assessment and related services to continue as the superintendent may deem safe or something like that because some of those things are essential health services that you, you have so much regression if you don't keep it up. So thanks.
Thank you. I'm wondering, I was wondering similarly, and I'm thinking it might make sense for a second motion after this one related to those special services, just so we're clear about what's happening. But I would be open to however the committee obviously wants to approach it. Anyone else from the school committee like to speak? I would also, if the superintendent or Director Hoffman is interested in, in making a comment, obviously, that's welcome at this point, too. Go ahead, Mayor Rita Gartner, please.
I, I too support this motion. I, I have, like Superintendent and Susan Ekstrom, the greatest empathy for those parents of the children that we're really talking about, 39 students. Is that me? Okay, I'll continue. It's 39 students and, and they are among some of the most vulnerable. But I also understand that there, I, I was moved by a couple of the different emails that I received from, or that we received from parents of these children. They're also only able to learn perhaps with the one-on-one situation. And I, I am greatly understanding of that. But at the same time, I do think they, they need to be protected. And I am very cognizant because I interact with Director Hoffman on a, on a daily basis, as do the rest of us in the administration, of the spread and how rapidly it's happening. And I think that it's really important that we give ourselves some time during this holiday season because we can't control everything. We can't control what other people in this community are doing, other families are doing. I wish we could, but we, we have this rise, I'm convinced, throughout the state and in this community because people gathered at Thanksgiving. And, and the only other time I can think of that people would really want to gather would be around the Christmas holiday. And I think the January 11th date is a very wise date. So to the extent that we can as a body, with the superintendent's advice, make it safe for the essential things that need to happen for these students during that time, I'm, I'm very much in favor of this, this motion at this time.
Mayor and Director Hoffman, please go ahead.
Thank you. So thinking about Thanksgiving, I think it was Member Ekstrom that said that 14 days after holiday is, is about okay for people, you know, to, to that, that everyone, whoever's going to be infected is going to be infected and everything's going to be okay. So if we look at November 26th, that's more than 14 days and the numbers are still rising. And the reason why is because that initial tier affected the second tier, which affected the third tier. So I'm looking ahead and January 1st, you know, 11 days later is January 11th, but you know, we're still three weeks out from Thanksgiving with the rise. And I could only imagine what's going to happen for Christmas and New Year's. Like I said, for the lead person for the Massachusetts Department of Public Health to make a mass phone call across the Commonwealth, there is great concern amongst many public health offices about the spread. So we're not just thinking about that initial gathering, we're thinking of the ripple effect. My, I mean, I would, I can't make a decision without my board, but I really want everyone to be mindful. I definitely feel for the parents. My best friend has a child with special needs. He's my godson. I understand and I know how transitions are very, very difficult and I feel. But I also know that it's not 14 days. I know, sorry, there's the cat. But I do know
I get to worry about
that it could be longer and I don't want to have everyone be stuck on January 11th and then it's January 20th. And so I really think that that should be a moving target and look at the metrics as they fall. Thank you.
Someone was going to speak. Who was that? Go ahead.
Ekstrom, as always. I think that we sort of, I think that's, we understand that. That's, that's hence the part that says further extension may be needed. And, and that's, you know, if it's needed, it's needed and we'll, and we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. I don't, I, it's, it, the, the hard part about right now is that we had people in schools and, and had to take them out after a week and a half. I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a difficult decision if people are home already and we say, you know what, it's going to be a little bit longer. That's a different, that's a different ballgame. So I, you know, I agree with you absolutely, but I do, I, and no one's going to like me for saying this, but as the mayor pointed out, when we do testing, we are going to find more people who have COVID. So it was basically a guarantee it was going to go up. I mean, you know, which, which neither here nor there, but we knew it was going to go up because we had more testing done. So, but I do want to say, so while we're talking about this and since I get to have the floor, my other superintendent, part of my, my, my question was, is it that we could or would it be wise to just completely close the buildings until the 11th? And is that some, just to ensure that nothing is floating around in there? Whether people know that they've been infected or not. I don't know that that's, that it's appropriate or that it's even something we can do, but that was one of my questions.
So I, would you care for me to respond, members?
Yeah, absolutely. Go ahead.
Chair, if you want to go to other members, that's fine, too. You know, I, I can answer that question from a couple of different perspectives. The first is that the Board of Health vote, as I understand it, applies to Phase Two in-person learning. So I, sitting here tonight, don't have, I'm not aware of a Board of Health recommendation regarding staff. One thing that this committee might consider asking is when the board next convenes to weigh in on that. Or we could ask our school physician, our lead nurse. We certainly discussed this tonight when we met. I can say that all teachers that come in to teach using the classroom are doing so voluntarily, meaning they are advised that those classrooms do not all have HVAC air quality testing. We prioritize the room where students were. They don't all have HEPA filters. In fact, most of them do not. We told them clearly that if you have any health and safety concerns, you should teach from home because your exposure is the least when you are not in another building with other people. So they're coming in on a voluntary basis, but that doesn't mean that asymptomatic individuals are not, even though they're, they're assuming the risk voluntarily, it doesn't mean they might not be contributing to the spread. So could we take that action? Yes, we could. But I'm not sure that I have the authority to make that decision. Going back to the policy on emergency closings, the, the policy basically says continue normal operations as much as you can, and that is what we've done. Where staff continued coming in, although students were remote. And also, as I understand, the mayor's implementation about municipal buildings, it is closed to the public, but that does not mean that staff are not working.
That is correct.
So as a department of the municipal, as another department, we are, we worked on Monday to align with the, the mayor's stance on that, which I read about in the paper over the weekend and tried to ensure that we also and tried to ensure that we also were following suit. So, if the school committee wanted to take that as a precaution, I would be happy to work on implementing protocols around that, that, and I think, you know, that's, that's something that the committee may have to go to the bargaining table about, but it's certainly something that you all may want to take up. But as member Hollins asked, there are questions then about work hours and so forth. And, and I think that's a different conversation than the immediate health and safety. So it wasn't part of the temporary action that I took, because it is more complex.
And I'm, and I'm not suggesting that people wouldn't be working that, or, or that people wouldn't be paid. It would be the buildings are closed. And, you know, like today, when we had a snow day, the administrator, as, as far as I know, the principals were still in the office. There's, there's, there is very little reason to be in the building, or principals are still in their buildings, in my mind, because I'm not a principal and I don't do all of these things. But in my mind, like, like on a snow day, I don't feel like there's a reason the principal should be there, but that's just me. And so, is it that we want to do that throughout? I, it's a question I have. We can discuss it. Y'all can tell me I'm crazy and that's that. I just, I'm curious.
Have I addressed the city buildings as part of this discussion?
Go, I'm sorry, I missed the first part of what you said?
I said, could, I'd like to, in a timely manner, address the city buildings as part of this discussion.
Sure, go ahead.
So I, I would just say, only use those as an example to the extent that, yes, we have closed the city building to the public. There are essential personnel who have to meet with the public by appointment only. And they are taking that risk as they do that. So, it's not an apples-and-apples situation, per se. And I'm not saying, I, I just think the education environment is different and the tasks that need to be done by the people that we consider is essential is different from the tasks that have to be, that education environments have to be concerned with. So, yes, we did close the buildings to the public and we could certainly use that as a context, but it isn't an apples-and-apples situation. I would rather we discuss what's important for the students, what's important for their children, and, and separate that out from what the city did with the city buildings.
Thank you, mayor. I think that's an important differentiation. I appreciate that. And I, I saw the superintendent nodding with you. Do you want to add something, superintendent Harper?
No, just, I, I fully agree. As an example of a way that we aligned is at the central office, we notified people that it would be by appointment only as opposed to walk-in hours to the general public. So there are some ways that we have similarities and in those ways, we're trying to align. And there are significant differences, as you noted, so I agree.
Thank you. Further discussion on this? I think we might be at a voting point. Let's go ahead and take a roll call vote. Member Johnson Musad, please. You're on mute. You're still on mute.
I thought you were telling member Karen she was on mute. I'm like, member Karen, get off of the mute. Okay, Bueller? No, uh, member Karen?
Yeah.
Vice chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, I'm a yes. Chair Poiety?
I abstain.
Mayor, member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Riede Gardner?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Wonderful. I think that was an excellent discussion. I appreciate that. And definitely director Hoffman, we appreciate your time this evening and your perspective for us. And we likely may ask for your attendance and guidance at a later date, too. Thank you, and good luck with all you're doing. We appreciate that as well. And I believe...
She's a rock star, by the way.
I, I see that, yes. And we're very grateful, very grateful. It's, this is definitely a team effort like, like none I ever imagined before. That is our only agenda item. I would, if anyone feels related to this agenda item, we need any further discussion or on a motion, motion and discussion, I should say, I would entertain that now.
Do we need to address the special needs evaluations piece? Or has that been addressed? Yes.
I, I see hands from member Hollins and then member Johnson Musad, and I'm imagining they're going to talk about that. Go ahead, member Hollins.
Well, you had asked if there, I think you mentioned there may need to be a second motion. So, I would, I would like to move that individual services and assessments for students will be scheduled by the superintendent as in her discretion.
Or her designee.
Or designee, yeah. But I would say individual services and assessments.
Okay. And is there a second to that motion? Really?
Second, second. Ekstrom's second. Sorry, I was on mute.
There's a second. Okay, let's discuss. Uh, member Johnson Musad, you have your hand up and then the superintendent.
I was gonna ask the superintendent, what would happen in, in the absence of a motion from the committee on this? My picture is that since we, we have voted about resuming Phase Two no sooner than January 11th, but I think that some of these services were included in Phase One, so.
So, we actually anticipated something similar like this happening in our creation of the phases in that we, during negotiations, when it became clear that Phase Two wasn't going to begin in September, we initiated a Phase One A, which allowed for evaluations and services as well as some extracurricular activities essentially. So not the classroom participation, but some evaluation and services, which is what we're talking about in this motion. And so if Phase Two is rolled back, but nothing else happened, and Phase One A, which is what in-person evaluation and services would be allowed to continue, it's just there's some weather permitting and I would need to work with the health director around some of the modifications on that. So, I have enough information to continue working to modify those tentative agreements that we already have and to continue evaluations and services. If you'd like to take a vote on this, that's fine as well, but that is our intention, that those continue to the greatest extent possible. So however you want to proceed with it, that's our intention, and I don't have any information at this moment prohibiting that.
Thank you. Member Ekstrom?
So, can you speak to a little bit about what the parameters were for evaluations and assessments in Phase One A? Because some of that, a large part of that was that they had to be conducted outside. And there's not really a weather permitting anymore. So, um, how is, what would, what would have to be done to ensure that we could continue inside? That's my question.
So I, I think what we've talked about so far is that I will follow up with director Hoffman and we will have conversations about possible ways that we could modify this. I think I'd rather not sort of guess on live TV. I think I might rather discuss with her her recommendations for modifying this and then come back to the committee. But the idea would be to make modifications with airflow, proper precaution, PPE, et cetera, such that, that the health director and Board of Health feel that we can safely accomplish evaluations and services, which I think was member Hollins's motion. And that is, that is consistent with, with our protocols. It would just need to be adapted somehow.
Can I clarify that my motion didn't say anything about Phase One, Two, or Three at all? And...
My question was what would hap...
It should be at their discretion.
Member Hollins, my, my, I, I, I think this is in response to my questioning, which was essentially what would happen if we didn't make this motion, which sounds very much like what would happen if we didn't make the motion is what you're, what you're recommending we, we, we vote on tonight.
So am I hearing a, or am I hearing a request to withdraw the motion? No?
I'm fine either way. It doesn't sound like it gets in the way for the superintendent for us to, to vote on this motion.
Okay. That's what I heard as well. Further discussion? So let's take a vote.
Member Karen?
I think that was a yes.
Was that a yes? Okay, member, uh, vice chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Chair Poiety?
I abstain.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Riede Gardner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wonderful. I, I think we've, I think we've addressed this pretty fully. I appreciate all of the discussion. And I would entertain, at this point, a motion to open an executive session for exemption reason number two under MGLC 30A subsection 21, which is to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel.
So moved.
That was member Wall and a second.
Second.
Member Hollins, and let's have a vote on that.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Riede Gardner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Jen, you are free to go.
Yes, thank you very much. And then, just for a note to GCTV and all others listening and following along, this, we will not be taking any votes in our executive session. We will not be returning to the public session. We are done for the evening and we thank everyone for tuning in. And I would take a motion to adjourn the public session, please.
Wait, can I ask one question?
I don't know. What's it about?
Do we think we're gonna have any more meetings this month?
We will not have any further meetings in the month of December.
Yes!
We had penciled in a, a meeting for, so you're saying that we had penciled in the week of 28th. It's not gonna happen.
No, no, it's not.
We need, we, we need some time off from all of this. Yeah, we're, we're, the, the chair has decided. We are done.
Spoken, if you will.
We will meet at some point.
Covid cooperates.
Yes, we will meet sometime after the new year. Where were we? Motion to adjourn the public session?
Yes.
I second it on top of her asking a question.
Okay, and let's have a vote on that, please.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I'm a yes. Member, uh, chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Riede Gardner?
Yes.
The motion unsurprisingly carries.
Wonderful. Meeting is adjourned at 7:03 PM. Everyone have wonderful holidays. Superintendent Harper, thank you. Have wonderful holidays, everyone.